Yep.
Monday, the eighth of May, twenty twenty-three, calling me to order at about four oh three. Sorry for the delay, we're having a bit of technical difficulties. As always, I'd like to remind everybody just to shut off and move all devices, put them on vibrate, please. Okay. Any additions to the agenda today? Councilor Valance?
Just looking to add a little announcement for the business awards for the chamber conference.
So there'll be under fifteen A additional council information. Anybody else? Hearing none, I do have a motion here that council hereby accepts the agenda from Monday, May eighth. Regular meeting of council is circulated for amended. Move by. Council Lake, second by council Valance. All in favor? Great, thank you. Any declarations of interest today? Hearing none, I have a motion here that council hereby accepts the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on Monday, April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, is circulated amended. Move by. Council Lake, second by council Sukie. Any questions, errors, omissions to those meetings? Hearing none, all question, all favor? Great, thanks. Okay. Read into our student council's report. Councilor Scorchinski.
We plan next to have a cowbell this year, so it's gonna take place on June sixth, from eleven to three. Student organized by the grade eleven class, and then Secret Deswone is also helping. So this year's theme is affecting our growth. We have Rose and Garland Modus as our elders this year. Our head dancer will be Jonathan Deswone and Wawa Paythorson. And our reigning director is Carson Ball, so it's hosted by Pidagong at M R A F. We also have our soccer team's going to Terrace Bay next week. The boys are going to be on Tuesday, and the girls are going to be on Wednesday, and hopefully advancing to Wawa. And then great news for the seniors that June is on, Brad is on June twenty-ninth this year.
Great, thank you for that. Council Zelli.
Yes. So first, in the school itself, we recently held a mental health lunch and learn, where representatives from mental health services visited for the lunch, and where students could interact and ask questions to them. The second news I have to share is something I'm quite excited about. So there is currently plans to have a pride parade held here in Marathon for the first time. The plan as of right now is for it to be held Sunday, June twenty-fifth, at one P M, starting at Lakeview Community Hall and traveling to here to Town Hall, which will be followed by a barbecue hosted by Barrick. This is being organized by Kristen Senden, and I will also be joining their organization committee and being bringing updates and helping out with that. Yeah.
Great, well, thank you.
Good stuff.
Any questions of student councils? Hearing none, great, thanks.
Maybe just one.
Most sure.
If, so for applying for the pride parade, if you need support, I think we're service counselor, Mary, you can also reach out. I'd be happy to help with that. I know Daryl's already had some communication with Kristen, so. Do you know you have some support?
Absolutely, thank you.
Yes, certainly, I did also as well, reach out to Kristen and talk to her, and I don't think I'll be here. I guess a couple of doing meetings, but I definitely encourage all of council to be there in support of that. And anything we can do to make it easier, definitely be there for them, so thanks for that. Okay, up next, we have a report on the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-six corporate strategic plan, with the course next to please.
So the development of the town of Marathon, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six strategic plan began in November of twenty twenty-two, with the approval of the process by council. During the months of December twenty twenty-two through April twenty twenty-three, the following activities were completed to inform the plan. Completion of an internal, external, environmental scan, two council senior leadership team planning sessions, a public engagement survey that generated two hundred and seventy-nine responses, an employee engagement survey, facilitated stakeholder engagement, and the twenty twenty-three municipal budget submissions. Feedback and data were compiled and analyzed, and then utilized to become the cornerstone foundation of the plan. The plan identifies the town of Marathon's goals for the next four-year term of council, with a focus on five key themes: quality of life, infrastructure and environment, economic development, growth and stability, organizational and fiscal resiliency, and progressive leadership and collaboration. The goals are supported by strategies and actions that will ultimately transform them into realities. It is also, it also reinforces the town's vision, mission, and corporate values that will drive the actions. The plan is not only the town of Marathons, but also representative of the entire community's hopes and aspirations. It is the corporation's mission and values that will motivate our abilities and drive our commitment to action. Progress will be communicated back to council every six months through a report to council. A plan is only as good as the resources in place to support it. To this end, the town's senior leadership team will be responsible for developing and putting into action an implementation plan that will set out project leads, milestones, and accomplishments. This will serve to measure the progress of the plan, the progress of the plan, and ultimately its success. Critical success factors are those things that must go well to ensure success for an organization, and therefore they represent those managerial areas that must be given special attention. Critical success factors include issues vital to an organization's current operating activities. And for us, those include implementing a plan that is not only realistic, but it is achievable, undertaking transformative leadership that will spur action and positive results, understanding the fiscal realities facing Marathon, and budgeting appropriately and responsibly, forming and embracing partnerships and joint ventures that are mutually and economically beneficial, and communicating in an open, transparent, and respectful way. Financially, projects identified in the plan will be included in the yearly municipal budgets as identified, and your administration recommends that council adopt the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six corporate strategic plan as presented today.
Great, thanks for that report. I do have a motion here. The council hereby accepts attached report and recommendation on twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six corporate strategic plan. For that council does twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six corporate strategic plan as presented. By, Council Valance, second, Council Lake, questions? Council Lake.
Yeah, so I really like on the plan how it's got photos of, you know, people from Marathon and our own workers. That makes it feel like not a store-bought plan. And I also think around communication that's open, transparent, respectful, defined is a big one. I just think we knock things off the list, and I've done a really good job of sticking to the plan and not whatever comes our way. Is there a way with the new Marathon app, as we report with that, that that, not only that the strategic plan might be there, but also the progress? The six-month update would be there as well for people to see that we're moving forward on those items?
Yeah, so one of the different communication pieces we're gonna implement as part of the actual implementation plan is we've created a dashboard. And the dashboard will do two things. Internally, it measures our progress on the items. But then we're also, every six months when we go to council, it'll be that dashboard that'll inform the report to council. And once council receives that report, we'll publish it as part of engagement with the community on progress of the plan.
That's great. I just think it's, you know, often, you know, we finish things and people don't see that, or wonder, oh, I wonder what that is in the pipeline. So this will be a great way for people to clearly understand. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for that, Council Lake, and as you know, and fully appreciate the fact that the old-school way that they're still up tuning the call into the town, or tune in any time to get any upgrade, updates on progress on the strategic plan, in paper form, and you just reach out to administration and they'll assist you in any way you might need it, because then everybody's tuned into electronics yet today. So, thanks for that.
Do we get it on A-track?
That might be a bit difficult. And I really appreciate the fact that, yes, administration took in the time and considered the consideration of utilizing our own pictures. That's really great. Thanks, and thanks for posting the mayor on there with his painted clothes. It was a great day painting the arena too, so I really enjoyed that. Thanks for that, appreciate that. So, oh, I better call the question before I put that over here. All in favor of that strategic plan? Good, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Up next, we report, the reports on the acting fire chief, Mr. Scorchinski.
So before I start the report, I would just like to thank Mr. Kruger from driving in from Manitowatch today to be present at our council meeting.
Yes, thank you.
So current fire chief Earl Gray tendered his resignation on March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, with his last working day with the town being May the fifth, so that was last Friday. The recruitment search for a new fire chief will begin on May ninth, which is tomorrow. To ensure that the town has a professional fire chief in place during the search phase, the township of Manitowatch has agreed to loan the services of their current fire chief, Mr. Don Kruger, to the town on an as-needed basis. The town will be responsible for reimbursing travel and meal expenses as per policy incurred by Mr. Kruger while he is in an acting capacity. There are no options today. Council, our administration presents this report for council's information, with the appropriate supporting bylaw to be presented later in the meeting.
Great, thanks for that report. And the council hereby accepts the attached report and recommendation, the appointment of acting fire chief, and the, and for that, the appropriate bylaw be adopted later in this meeting, appointing the acting emergency services manager, fire chief. Move by. Council Lake, second by council Sukie. Any questions? Council Lake.
Yeah, first of all, thank you to Mr. Kruger for stepping in, and certainly we need that service. I'm just wondering around, like I drive by on Tuesdays, and I can see there's always fire training on Tuesdays. Are we going to continue that? Will that be moved in-house, or is Mr. Kruger can come down and offer that? And then, I mean, I, are we, in the case of an incident, how is that gonna look? And are we comfortable with that arrangement?
Yeah, excellent questions. So before Fire Chief Graves' departure, we put in place an internal transition group of three of our more senior firefighters. So by committee will handle incidents as they come up. Fire Chief Kruger is gonna come in on Tuesdays, will be his day to come to Marathon. So he'll come in in the afternoon and deal with any administrative items that need attention. And then, if needed, he'll stay for the training on Tuesday nights. It will be our internal leadership group that'll lead the training, but we'll have the advisement of Fire Chief Kruger on Tuesdays. And in the event of a serious matter that requires responding to, Mr. Kruger will drive in from Manitowatch to assist Marathon with those incidences.
Great, great. Perfect, everybody else? Good, great, thank you, call a question, all in good. Good. Thank you, Mr. Kruger, for Chief Kruger, for stepping in and helping us out for the time being.
My pleasure.
Any, up next, we have a report on the new fees and charges, Mrs. Scorchinski.
So at the regular meeting of council on December the twelfth, twenty twenty-two, council approved the recommended municipal fees and charges for twenty twenty-three. Since the initial fees and charges were approved, administration has identified three additional charges that should be added to the fees and charges schedule. With the completion of the kayak canoe storage area, a fee needs to be put in place for rentals of the storage units. Administration has researched similar type facilities, and is proposing both weekly and monthly rentals. Yearly rentals have been discounted based on the fact that there are only eight units in total. Units would be available on a first-come, first-served basis. Weekly rental rates would be fifteen dollars, and monthly would be fifty dollars. In the ancillary building located adjacent to the golf cart storage compound, there are thirty-six single and four double lockers that administration is proposing be available for rent to store golf clubs. The lockers would be available on a first-come, first-served basis, and renters would be required to supply their own locks for their locker. The fees to be charged would be forty-four dollars and ten cents for a single, seventy-one dollars and fifty cents for a double. Administration is also currently exploring the potential of using the large storage room in the clubhouse as an open space storage area. There would be no lockers, and there would be no individual spaces, but there would be the availability of storage, but this work has not yet been completed. Administration will undertake that the next couple of weeks. Moving over to the work side of things, with the anticipated increase in larger industrial road traffic, with the pending mine construction and port authority development, as well as an increase, as well as increased enforcement by the Ministry of Transportation, a vehicle oversized permit fee should be charged for use of local municipal roads. Based on a review of eight Ontario municipalities who have this fee in place, administration is recommending the following: a single-use oversized permit, seventy-five dollars, and an annual oversized permit fee of two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Bylaw number one eight eight five, which regulates traffic and parking on highways and parking lots, and on municipal and private property within the municipal boundaries of the town, will also have to be amended to include oversized load language. Financially, these new fees will generate revenue, but the total amount to be generated is unknown at this time. Once a year or season, in the case that the golf course is passed, with these fees in place, a proper baseline amount can be determined for budgeting purposes. Options to council: A, include the new fees and the twenty twenty-three fees and charges bylaw, and amend bylaw number two zero three eight, and amend bylaw number one eight eight five, or do not implement the new fees in twenty twenty-three. Your administration recommends that option A be approved, and that bylaw twenty thirty-eight and bylaw number one eight eight five be amended to reflect the appropriate changes.
Great, I don't have a motion, but I imagine it being the bylaws for that, correct?
There should be a motion, we should have a motion.
Yeah, there's a bylaw for the fees and charges, but there's no motion.
Sorry.
Unless it's taxed to this one? Uh, there is, sorry. They both stuck it together. Thank you. I do have a motion, and the council hereby accept the attached report and recommendation on new fees, and charge for twenty twenty-three, and for that, the appropriate bylaw be adopted later in this meeting, amending the changes as described in this report. Move by. Council Sukie, second by council Lake, questions? Council Sukie.
Yeah, so I have a couple of questions regarding the oversized permit fee for the annual fee. Can like, just, for example, jet mining, just get one permit, then every contractor that works for them can then use the roads with their permit? Or would it be like each contractor or construction company working underneath them would have to pay for an annual?
It would be individually, because it's based on licensing.
Yeah.
So it's driven, you know, these permits are driven through the Ministry of Transportation, so it's the actual trucks that are on the road, so they're non-transferable. So depending on the load and the company, you know, as an example, let's say they were offloading a tower at the port. It might be, you know, the one-time permit is all they need. But let's say they're offloading over a two-week period a number of items from the port. They were required to have the annual fee.
Okay, then, how would be the plan to enforce that?
So it would be through our bylaw department. So it's under, even, all of our roads are still considered under the Highway Traffic Act. That's why the M T O standard is applicable. But bylaw eighteen eighty-five, which would be amended to include this language, would then be applicable, and would be enforced by our bylaw department.
Council Lake.
Yeah, I just, this one's on the storage at the clubhouse, which I think is great. I think that was a thing of golfers identified they liked, and it's a nice creative solution. I'm just wondering, as we look, as recreation looks down the road, would there be any way to offer a creative solution for the skiers as well? I know that the same comment has come from them, it was nice at the old clubhouse, you could have your skis there in the relaxing area. I see that there, in the, in the large storage area, that there's a solution that works for golfers. Maybe just also seeing if it works for ski, skiers as well.
Yeah, I think the, you know, the simple answer is potentially. So this year will obviously be a bit of a pilot project, we'll see how it goes. And, you know, I think if it works on the golf side, then we could certainly transfer it over to the ski season as well.
Thank you.
One thing was discussed around that, Council Lake, was the fact that that big room, there's no lockers. So the individuals would be putting their equipment in that's exposed to all other individuals going in and out of that room, even though it would be locked by the staff and the administration, so approves it, goes through council. There's still gonna be exposure of their equipment, so that'd be one hundred percent your risk, and leave it in that facility, wherever the fee might be, or either or, right? So, so individuals gotta take that into consideration. The lockers up at the other end at the compound were put in many years ago, obviously weren't impacted by the fire, so it makes sense to rent those out to golfers, because they're there, and they're meant for golf clubs.
And that, that building's not heated, right?
No.
That's correct. So, so that, that space wouldn't work for skiers, obviously, it would be.
So it's, it's a solution, and they're there, wanna make some revenue off of it.
That's great.
And just, you know, council recalls, one of the budget items we did deliberate was looking at a locker system within the larger storage area in the clubhouse. And in this year's budget, it was a challenge, and it was removed, but that's not to say it can't be looked at in a future budget.
Okay. Anything else, or no? No, I appreciate that, so all golfers will have the opportunity to be the first-come, first-served tomorrow morning.
It'll be Wednesday morning, and it'll be online, it will not be in person.
Okay.
We will have a, tomorrow, the link will be released to the public, so they know how to access it, but it will be online only.
Okay, so will everybody out there in Wolfland hear that? It's thirty-six plus four.
The Black Friday, right?
Anyway, it is what it is, and then administration, as you stated, will bring back an idea of whether or not they'll continue on with the bigger, bigger room in the clubhouse, so that there could be potentially more availability down the road. Okay, all in favor? Hearing, thank you. Up next, we have a report on the investment policy, Mr. Verbal.
You may on council. Financial policy eleven states that the treasurer shall provide an annual investment report that details the status of the current investment portfolio and the transactions made since the last report. The investment report shall contain a statement about the performance of the investments, a statement by the treasurer as to whether or not, in his opinion, all investments were made in accordance with the policies and goals adopted by the municipality, and other information that council may require, or that in the opinion of the treasurer should be included. So in the last report, in twenty twenty-one, the bank interest was twenty-three thousand dollars. We deal with TD, their rate remained at zero point five five percent. One investment pays a slightly higher interest rate, point one six five percent higher than TD. Term deposit interest was seventy-one thousand dollars, and the realized income in one investment was sixty-seven thousand dollars. There were no purchases or redemptions made in twenty twenty-one. And last year, in twenty twenty-two, the bank interest doubled to fifty thousand dollars. TD's interest rate gradually increased from zero point five five percent to be four point zero five percent in December. One investment continues to pay the higher interest rate. Term deposit interest was a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, and the realized income in one investment was forty-eight thousand dollars. No redemptions or purchases were made in twenty twenty-two. As of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, the book value of the investments in one investment was one point six million dollars. There was six point six million dollars of almost half of it tied to water surplus, invested in term deposits, water surplus over many years. And there is three point six million dollars in various bank accounts, of which eight hundred thousand dollars is specifically tied to projects. Now reflected in the one investment portfolio is the unrealized value, sorry, unrealized change in market value. In twenty twenty-one, the unrealized value was two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Last year, the unrealized value decreased to ninety thousand dollars. All investments were made in accordance with, were made in accordance with the town's investment policy. This report is for council's information only.
Thank you for that report, any questions, Mr. Verbal, then? So, so I have a couple in regards to your comment about the six point six million dollars of the investment in term deposits. Is that's with TD or one investments?
We don't have any term deposits with TD. They're with Raymond James and Connaught Genuity.
Connaught Genuity. So, so with that being said, are they, they flexible enough to say, what was the term on them, like one year, three years? So are they giving, are they giving higher than one investment right now?
Yes. It's whenever a term deposit, it's similar to you, when your T I C comes up, you can determine what interest rate you want and the length of period.
So, so I guess what I'm asking is, because now with the interest rates timing a little bit better, so then, when the term is done, they're coming back to you saying that they're gonna give you the new rate, and competitive rate, so you're not having to switch it from one location to the other.
Correct.
Good. You're making a tough buck.
The real question is, how long do you invest for?
Right, so, so you've been, you've been tracking it pretty steady, and what's your average of one-year type of term investments?
One year to eighteen months, again, over the last eight months or whatever, interest rates have gone up, and so you try and lock it in, because they'll tell you to, they give you the terms from nine months to five years.
So with that being said, if you don't mind, so when a term deposit, and you need to, for whatever reason, tap into the dollars, is there penalty on the interest spared at that point?
If I have to redeem early?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. But we haven't had to do that, so that's a good thing.
Correct.
Good. Any other questions? That was only for information, thank you very much, Mr. Verbal. Next up, report on the tax ratios.
Okay, section three oh eight of the municipal act requires single-tier municipality pass a bylaw every year to establish the tax ratios for the taxation year. Section three one three prescribes tax reductions for vacant and excess lands in the commercial and industrial tax classes. Tax ratios establish the relative tax burden for each property class. Council has the authority to adopt alternative ratios as long as they fall within the provincial range of fairness. That is, one for multi-residential, from one to one point one, and all others is zero point six to one point one. Since our ratios fall outside the range of fairness, we can only move closer towards these ranges. Historically, the province has provided another option in utilizing revenue-neutral transaction ratios to mitigate tax shifts amongst the classes because of reassessment. Due to the province assessment of hurdle, again, revenue-neutral ratios are not permitted for twenty twenty-three. Once again, administration is proposing no changes to the tax ratios. Residential legislated is always going to be one, multi-res is one point one, commercial is one point two five, parking and landfill is one point one, industrial is two point two five, and a large industrial is two point six three. To illustrate the effect of tax ratios, a cinema house and a business that are both assessed to be worth a hundred thousand dollars. The tax rate for the residential is three percent. The homeowner would pay three thousand dollars in municipal property tax, but the business owner would pay the three percent times the ratio of one point two five, so the rate would be three point seven five percent, or he'd pay seven hundred and fifty dollars more taxes. With the overhaul of property assessment in nineteen ninety-eight, the province recognized that not all properties classified in the commercial and industrial property classes were being occupied to the same extent, so it codified two subclasses. Vacant land is property that has no assessable improvement or building. Excess land is a property that has not been improved and is in excess of the amount of land required to support the improved portions of the land. The Ministry of Finance prescribes tax reduction, tax rate reduction percentages of thirty percent for commercial and thirty-five percent for industrial properties. In twenty seventeen, the province granted flexibility to municipalities to alter the tax reduction program by offering the discount outside the thirty to thirty-five percent range, or even eliminate them. The reduction for vacant commercial property was eliminated, as the town of Marathon has the optional class of parking lot slash vacant, but excess commercial properties still receive a thirty percent reduction, and vacant and excess industrial properties are given a thirty-five percent reduction. Changing tax ratio does not generate more tax revenue. It simply shifts the tax burden amongst the classes. Increasing the tax ratios would expose revenue to a higher risk of tax write-offs. So the options are to adopt bylaw two zero five two and approve the ratios as presented, or adopt bylaw two zero five two with amendments. Administration is recommending that option A be selected, establishing the ratios as detailed in bylaw two zero five two.
Great, thanks for the report, I have a motion here that council hereby accept the attached report and recommendation on twenty twenty-three tax ratios. I prefer that the appropriate bylaw be adopted later in this meeting, establishing tax ratios concerning property classes, setting a tax rate reductions prescribed properties and subclasses for the twenty twenty-three year. Move by. Council Lake, second by council, other questions? Council Lake.
So, going back in history, I remember when, you know, at council, the industrial rate was substantially higher than this now. We reduced it, reduced it, reduced it to try to keep the mill viable. The idea since then has been, you know, as the industrial assessment has gone down, more and more tax burden has shifted to residents. That's the thing we always complain about, it doesn't feel fair. When, when it talks about revenue-neutral transaction ratios, which would mitigate tax shifts amongst classes, is that a solution? I actually don't understand how that mechanism works. I know it's not available now, it's definitely assessed. But how do you stop that shifting, especially in small towns where, you know, businesses shut down?
It would be a mathematical equation that you would have to do, opt-out, it does have software to do it. And so if, when assessment starts again, I would have to bring the, one of those options, the revenue-neutral ratios to council, just to give you an information. We'll see if that is doable or not, or council would make a decision whether to stay with status quo or accept those ratios.
Okay, and those ratios can only be established. And those ratios can only be established if NPAC starts doing the reassessments here.
Once the province allows NPAC to provide the new assessment instead of what's currently there from 2016.
Okay. So, I think creatively, the thing that we've always said is, doesn't feel fair that it always gets shifted back onto the resident as opposed to, you know, industries that are working in the area, taking money over there.
Thank you. Anybody else? We had a meeting with NPAC, Mrs. Skorchinsky, councillor Wheeler, councillor Lake, myself, and actually it was very productive, but again, they're as frustrated as, as we are in regards to the province deciding when they're going to allow the assessment to take place. And we made sure that we very clearly stated that they're going to have to do an education process because a lot of people are not going to go online and check their, my NPAC and see what their assessments are going to be. They need to do the education formula. And when we heard from, from NPAC representative, when we had Charlotte here in town, they will come and do some sort of education. That's key because as you stated in your own report, 3% right now in the average homeowner, that will have to be reflective and changed as we change the ratios around once the assessments go up. Clearly, one other question I had, Mr. Virbel, was of actions vacant properties. We, we had this before, we used to have to go check the property, the commercial property that was vacant. Now they, how does that work now? That's all been wiped out.
This is the vacant land.
Okay. But so vacant properties now, so, so business owner A has a vacant unit within building.
We, council got rid of the vacant unit rebate, I believe, in 2017.
Yeah, I recall that, but I'm talking about now when you say about vacant and commercial or property, they don't have the right to say that there's any vacancy within their buildings, say that one reduction.
It's nothing to do, it's vacant land or excess land. It's nothing to do with vacant building.
Okay. Anything else? Here you go. Call question on favor. Very, thank you. Okay. Next, we have report on recognition of 23 budget expenses, Mr. Virbel.
So, back in 2009, when the province decided to piece out 3150 accounting rules, they came up with a regulation 284 requiring municipalities to report to councils when certain expenses were excluded from the budget. The province required municipalities to acknowledge awareness during the budget process of inclusions and exclusions of certain expenses. Expenses were allowed to be excluded from the annual budget with provision that a resolution be adopted stating if and how these expenses were included in the annual budget. The report is to contain the estimated impact of the overall accumulated surplus of such transactions. The expenses referred to in the regulation are amortization, post-employment benefits, and solid waste, landfill closure and post-closure costs. For the town Marathon, budgeting process looks at revenues, expenses, capital purchases, debt financing, and transfers to and from reserves. The term estimates of all sums required mean that's the, that the municipality does not generate more income that is needed, nor does it allow for not generating enough income. The total at the bottom is zero. Amortization is the acknowledgement that capital assets are used up over their lifetime. Provincial regulations, that assets are to be amortizing using the street line method. For example, $100,000 asset with the effective life of ten years would result in an annual amortization of $10,000 per year. Since amortization is not a cost outlay, or does it contribute, contribute to the property tax, determining the property tax levy, it's not included in the annual budget approval, but the purchase of the asset is. Details on capital acquisitions and amortizations for the consolidated municipality and library are as follows. So, in 2019, capital spending was 1.8 million, amortization was 1.6, so we had a difference of $149,000. In 2020, capital was greatly reduced to 800,000 because during the pandemic, we decided not to do as much, but amortization was very similar to the previous years of 1.7. So, our assets were amortized $886,000 more than what was purchased. In 2021, we started the road resurfacing, so again, capital was 2.5 million, amortization 1.7, so we were better by $766,000. Last year, we had big plans on doing two big projects, but it did not happen. So, capital was 1.5 million, but amortization was more at 255,000. So, the goal is always to be positive so that assets are being replaced ahead of being used up. For the town Marathon, budgeting process does not account for amortization, but to avoid significant variances to budget, when analyzing the annual financial statements, the auditor adjusts the budget by adding the actual amortization expense as the budget amortization expense. Luckily, the town Marathon does not have any post-employment benefits, so we do not have to discuss that any further. For the town Marathon, the current expense of monitoring the closed landfill at Penlake Road is recognized. Similar to amortization, the budget process does not recognize the post-closure expenses that will be incurred in operating landfills. In 2022, the landfill closure decreased by $290,000 to 700, sorry. In 2022, the liability decreased by $290,000 to be $780,000. This was because a higher discounted rate was used. A higher investment rate of return means that you need less money today to pay for the costs in the future. The auditor included this charge by reducing environmental expenses by $290,000. The former Penlake landfill requires monitoring until 2035, and the Camp 19 landfill is estimated to reach capacity in 2141. So, the cost of capital spending in 2023 is $100,000. Amortization in 2022 was 1.7. The 2023 budget has $42,000 for monitoring the Penlake landfill, but there is nothing recognizing the increased liability of operating Camp 19. There is no reserve established to fund the closure expected to be in 2141. Administration requests that council accepts the exclusion of amortization, post-employment benefit expenses, and non-fill closure expenses from the 2023 budget process.
Thank you for the report. I have a motion here at council hereby subsidy tax report recognition 2023 budget and excluding expenses. I further that council accepts exclusion of amortization, post-employment benefit expenses, and landfill closure charges from the 2023 budget process. Move by. Council Lake, second by councillor Valance. Any questions of Mr. Virbel?
Without warning. Yes.
That's similar to the, the guy who's going to do the mathematical number system, and if you understand it, you're great, and you understand that the PSAP's amortization is basically simply saying you need to fund this amount of money for the future. So, it's a, it's a process.
I only bring this up one, once during the term of council, and it's important that councillor Wheeler and councillor Sookie recognize that amortization and landfill closure is not recognized. Luckily, we're not at the point that we were 10 years ago when we had to shut down the Penlake dump.
Yep.
So, council has to know by 2141 what they're going to do to close the Camp 19 landfill.
We'll keep that on the agenda for future council.
Exactly. 2140.
That's a ways away. I don't know if anybody else be kicking around still then, but I appreciate that. Any other questions, Mr. Virbel, on that report? Hearing now a call question on favor. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Virbel. Have you bylaws be presented? Bylaw number 19, sorry. Bylaw number, oh, highlights for the council. Sorry, I was jumping ahead myself there. For the attendance at Normal Conference, we'll start with councillor Wheeler.
Yeah. So, the Normal Conference was actually my first opportunity to attend a conference as a member of council. It was a really great experience to meet other members of councils and administrations to see that most communities in the north have the same issues that we're facing. I got to tour the new cases building at Laurentian University or Lakehead University, sorry, to see that it's LEED certified and attended presentation on sustainability, the, what Lakehead's doing for sustainability as well as the city of Thunder Bay. So, that was really interesting. And also, another thing that I found really interesting was the, we found out about the presence of frag mighties invasive plants here in Northern Ontario. So, that is something that is definitely going to be hearing more vote as time moves on.
Yeah, for sure. That was interesting, and the presenter made it a very clearly point of stating in his presentation that Marathon is one of the hotspots of frag mighties. So, interesting.
If you pay attention, there's frag mighties very close, like probably to this building.
Yeah. All grass that takes over, so it's something that'd be interesting. Councillor Lake?
Yeah. You know what? I think it was, it was nice to go back to Noma. It's been a while since I've been there. The one thing that I definitely saw was, so, you know, worship, you, you talked about some of the successes we've had working with our local First Nations, and I think that's good. And then I cannot remember the member of province's name who came up and addressed everybody and said, imagine if we had more, you know, Indigenous partnership sitting in this room together. And I thought, you know, I know we've taken folks from BN down to Toronto before, but next year, as we think about things that might go on the agenda, that might be a really powerful thing to have is to bring, you know, the things that are working here as a, you know, a dialogue maybe between the mayor, the CEO, and the opposite administration and man chief. I just think that's something that we're doing well. And it struck me when a member said, there's, basically, there's no Indigenous people in the room, that we can be part of changing that. So, that was one thing that really resonated with me.
Great. Thank you. Councillor Zott?
Yes. I really enjoyed going to Noma. This was the most formal event I'd ever been to because, again, I'm 17, so where else am I going? But I had a chance to speak at Noma. I spoke on the success of our student counselor program, how to make it a successful program, and why it is good for a community to have youth involvement at a municipal council level. And I thought speaking there was just a great opportunity to bring student perspective to those other communities that don't have a program such as this one, and to maybe even encourage other municipal councils to start a program like this because, as I said at Noma, I do believe it is a very great program for a community and for driving a community forward.
Great. Thank you. Mrs. Skorchinsky, have any to highlight?
I think just overall, it was a well-attended conference. I had the opportunity to, to meet with our CAO working group, which is an informal group of seven CAOs of the larger municipalities in Northwestern Ontario. So, agreed to get together face to face, and, you know, we're all kind of, you know, in that, you know, been in the CAO role for 10 years plus now, you know, and we talked about what's really changed over the years. And, you know, the agenda at Noma this year, you know, was heavily social issue-based. You know, there's more of a, you know, seems more of a push towards those, those social items that traditionally aren't municipal spaces to be in, they're provincial or federal, but because they're on our doorsteps, we have to deal with them. So, you know, we talked about how much more challenging it is to run an administration in 2023 as compared to 10 years ago, and how that's even going to change even more, you know, as we move forward. So, it was good to get together. I wouldn't say it was refreshing, but as councillor Wheeler stated, all of our municipalities are facing these issues and are becoming more prevalent. So, we're going to see those appear on a more yearly basis in our budgets.
Great. Thanks. First off, I'd like to thank councillor Zott for doing a great presentation, and a lot of good feedback. As you know, a lot of people come over and thank you for that directly, and, and really was really insightful. Councillor Skorchinsky couldn't make it. She fell ill just the day of coming up Thunder Bay, so it's too bad, because I think it would have been a great opportunity for her as well to understand and participate in that. So, I hope you learned a lot of that and, and take that forward in your future life. So, I appreciate that. It was a jam-packed, it was probably the best Normal Conference in years, if not the best that's been presented. We had a, you know, jam-packed agenda, and I'm just going to talk about a key, couple key things. I really got a lot of good feedback in regards to that. One was around the leadership presentation, and it was a panel of us that spoke on, on our, our knowledge of being our councils and administration for many years. And the, the crowd was really tuning in, and a huge amount of feedback on the surveys about that. So, that was a really good opportunity for, and it was 40% roughly of newly elected officials in 2022 elections. So, a lot of good feedback on that, and as well as, as around the leadership and the Indigenous relationship building, and we had a lot of good feedback on that as well. As councillor Lake mentioned, Bear Stiles, the, it was Bear Stiles, who was the NDP newly elected NDP leader, I may mention a marathon relationship with BN as a role model, as well as, as MP Patty Haidee as well mentioned in her speech about the relationship that we have with BN. And we have a great relationship, and we continue to build on that, and we talked a bit about that, and part of that panel I was presenting on, on that. And they're not just, you know, our First Nation, they're our neighbors and friends. That's the key. It's not, you know, Mayor Landry said, you know, have a friend before you need a friend. And what the idea was that, get out there, talk to people, talk to your neighbors, and, and build that relationship because it is key, and it's, it's not just about the economics going forward, it's about building a relationship that we all want to live in a facility, you know, in a communities that are really good for children and grandchildren. Some of the other things we had an opportunity, Mr. Skorchinsky and itself, as I spent on NPAC, councillor Wheeler and Lake came in and talked with Red Lake about our future assessments on mining and how that, that might roll out. We'll continue to pursue that. We had a great keynote speaker, Doug Griffins, Talk 13 Ways to Kill a Municipality. Very good. He was an ML, a member of the legislature in Alberta for many years, then he, he got into self-employment and, and wrote a book, co-authored a book, 13 Ways to Kill a Municipality. Really good keynote speaker and really enlightened, enlightened the, the audience around what you should and shouldn't do as a, as a member of your council. And we, you know, as Mr. Skorchinsky identified with his administration team, it's, it's going to be harder for all municipal councillors as well as administrators going forward with, with the social media aspect because, you know, no matter what you say or do, that it's there and you have to deal with that. So, how you deal with that is going to be the key on your success as a council as well as administration team. So, you have to continue to forge, forge forward is what his message was clearly. And then we had another keynote speaker in regards to the, the ways that the municipality works with this next level of government, with our provincial parent. As I say, and I always said this ever since I've been mayor, that the provincial government is our parent, they're the ones that dole out the cash, and federal governments give the provincial government, the, the parents, the cash, gift to the grandkids, which is us. So, we, we can only hope that we continue to have that relationship with our provincial government, and I think we do, and as, as Mrs. Skorchinsky and myself attend a lot of the Roma or Aymo conferences as in concert, and from time to time, members of council have came, come to those meetings with us. We build that relationship with the face-to-face meetings and continue to provide the information that they're looking for, is for us to get support in our, our solo, in our, our different things. One other thing I'll highlight on before, since there was a lot of stuff on the agenda that I hear from all the council members I've attended, was we had, I had an opportunity to go to a roundtable discussion with Minister Pachini on Caribou, and we talked in length for one hour and a bit about that and how the impacts of the coastal range. And BN is working closely, and Mr. McCott, First Nations work closely with the government, and Minister Pachini had seen, seen, he said many times in, in that meeting as well, that his relationship with BN is, is really good, and, and they had a meeting prior to that meeting about the re-inhabitant of the Caribou along coastal range, but that not be for a while. And I know that Chief Duncan has said they have a plan to reintroduce and regrow the herds on the islands, and we're hoping that through the federal governments and species at risk, that nothing comes out of that. And I had a conversation with Mr. Haidee as well, and was, was told that, you know, they're, they're working together and there shouldn't be no, no issues around any protection order along the coastal range. And you're familiar with the coastal range, it goes from Wawa, Terrace Bay, 10 kilometers as a crow flies inland. That's a huge swath of land, and to continue to consult with First Nations as well as communities. So, that's an ongoing process. We're looking forward to those meetings. So, it was all in all, a good, good session for three days, and looking forward to our next session will be in Aymo, and we'll have those informations, and we'll have an opportunity to meet with NPAC officials there. And I really was pleased with NPAC. They, they seem like they're, they're listening to our concerns, and we'll bring that back and meet with the appropriate finance, ministry finances, employees, and bureaucrats, and see if we can get some traction. Okay. With that being said, we get into the bylaws. Bylaw number 202051 being a bylaw to amend, bylaw number 2038 being a bylaw to authorize the establishment of fees and charge for the town Marathon for the year ending December 31st, 2023 to be read a first, second, and third time, finally passed. For the year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three to be read a first, second, and third time and finally passed the eighth day of May twenty twenty-three. Move by. Counselor Valens, second by Counsel Lake, any questions on that bylaw? Hearing none. Call question on favor. Very. Thank you very much. Up next, we have bylaw number twenty fifty-two being a bylaw to set tax ratios to cover property classes. And to set tax rate reductions for prescribed property subclasses for a town of Marathon. For the twenty twenty-three taxation year to be read a first, second, and third time and finally pass this eighth day of May twenty twenty-three. Move by. Counselor Valens, second by Counsel Suki, any questions on that bylaw? Hearing none. Call question on favor. Very. Thank you. Up next, we have bylaw number twenty fifty-three being a bylaw to repeal the bylaw number nineteen eighty-five being a bylaw to appoint the emergency service manager. Slash fire chief for the corporation town of Marathon to be read a first, second, and third time and finally pass this eighth day of May twenty twenty-three. Move by. Counsel Suki, second by Counsel Lake, any questions on that? Hearing none. Call question on favor. Very. Thank you. And bylaw number twenty fifty-four being a bylaw to authorize amended bylaw number eighteen eighty-five being a bylaw to. To solidate repeal and replace the bylaws that regulate traffic and parking on highways and parking lots on municipal private property within the municipality boundaries. Uh, or town of Marathon to be read a first, second, and third time and finally passes eighth day of May twenty twenty-three. Move by. Counsel Lake, second by Counsel Suki, questions on that? Hearing none. All the question on favor? Very. Thank you. Then we have a few uh new business requests received in the Federation of Northern Ontario municipalities. Uh, uh, Pnom and for pertaining to the bail reform for that a copy of the motion be forwarded to individual list and originating request. Move by. Counsel Lake, second by Counsel Valens, questions, comments? Counsel Lake?
I did. I see it's coming from Pnom. That's the sister uh group to the Noma that we went to. Where is Noma standing on this resolution?
So Noma's fully supportive. And I could just uh share with my councilmembers, I sat on the advocacy committee meeting today with the Ontario Association Police Service Board. This has already got more traction than this. This is just added added value. Uh, we've sent it off to the Sojourn's office and we fully support the bail reform and uh. It's working through it. If you listen to the government, they've announced an additional funding somewhat in that. And so the we're hoping to get federal government traction. So. It the 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 motion's been set and we're just this will just be an added uh, you know, support Noma and Pnom and Roma and AMO and. And then, of course, Association of Police Service Boards.
And sir, in terms of bail, can like, one of the great things of Marathon is we're isolated from from last thing. Can can bail be set such that we can say this, you know, we don't want this person back in our municipality? Or is that? Is there a municipal role for that? Or that's that's just?
No. This bail reform mostly is around the firearms.
Yeah.
And and about somebody who's been charged previously with a firearm crime doesn't get access to bail. That's the big key. Now, there's a lot of more wording in that, but that's the big push on that. As we know, the individual came out with was released on early bail, came out and right away went a shot and killed a police officer. Uh, for no other reason other than want to kill a police officer. So that individual might not have done that if he was still in jail and served the time that was appropriately administered. Any questions?
This is our council information, and that was a good question. So uh, thi- this involves criminal court. Municipalities aren't involved. Where we are involved is provincial offenses uh acts. Um, where we do work with the Crown, um, and those monies that are generated through those court systems, uh, some do repatriate back to the municipalities.
All in favor? Very. Thanks. Yeah, and I will be attending uh uh the H G M at the end of this month uh for the police service. And I have another board meeting next week. Uh, so we we got a lot of stuff on the agenda and. And hopefully it'll be the uh the first one in a while that we have the Sojourn, the premier, all the all the people who are going to have in here at the actual conference. So. This one, the next is council hereby supports resolution receiving intelligence pertaining to school bus star arm cameras. And further, that a copy of the motion be forwarded to individual list and originating request. Move by. Counsel Valens, second by Counsel Suki, questions? Counsel Valens?
Would this not be more of a school board issue to discuss? And if so, have we had any conversation with our local school boards here regarding it?
Uh, no, we haven't personally. I don't think administration has. No. Uh, this has also been discussed as part of the bigger picture for the Association Police Service Boards. Okay, because it's becoming an issue of people just ignoring school bus hours, period. And, you know, nobody wants to see any child get hit by a car. But if you don't have any type of enforcement, I think that's the key message, right? And what the camera does is allow us the bus driver now to have that reportability for that individual's plate. And so could be some some future consequences for that. What that looks like? That's another question. But the reality is it's it's not in our small communities. We know everybody, the bus drivers know who you are. They see you and go, hey, you know? And it does happen from time to time, I'm sure, but you know. Um, none of us want to see that. Counsel Lake?
Yeah, and and I agree with that. I just I have. A hard time with two parts of this. One is I don't think the world needs more cameras. I think there are too many cameras in the world anyway. Uh, and two, I just I I can't imagine what this would cost out of provincial coffers to put. Uh, because I'm sure it won't be the, you know, we can buy a Home Depot camera, put it or a. The entire camera and put it on our thing for no money. These will be thousands and thousands of dollar systems on each and every school bus. I just uh. Like, I I agree that in our municipality, if if I were to, you know, if I'm not paying attention, I run by a school bus and it could absolutely happen. I know who's going to call me, right? And and they, I don't think this is an issue for Marathon. Um, I just. I can't imagine what this would cost. So I'm not particularly paid for this.
Anybody else? Counsel Wheeler?
Uh, I agree with Counsel Lake. I I. I feel that it could be a benefit safety-wise, but I don't feel that the province should be. On the hook necessarily for that cost of putting a camera on every single school bus in the province.
Okay. Any else? Okay, we'll call a question in. All in favor? And I will support it as well. So it will get passed. I I believe it's a it's a device and whether it'll get traction from the uh. The school boards paying onto the school uh, school bus operators, because there's sixteen buses uh traveling our day our our highways every day. And, you know, yeah, Marathon, we're very safe and we're a small community and buses are traveling at low speed. But a lot of these kids are getting dropped off on highways and Highway seventeen, Highway, and all the bigger highways along the corridors when they're going to or from school. So. There's there's huge impact. So I I think there's some some relevance, maybe not on all sixteen thousand school buses, but. Be could be areas that are really have high priority where incidents happen a lot. So at least gives them some some opportunity to discuss.
Oh, it certainly is.
Yeah, it's not a worry, but that 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 could go back and have at least a discussion to get started, right? That's the key. Okay, up next I have a council resolution that hereby supports resolution received in Miss Valley Shunya. Change to embrace charges and further the copy is must be forwarded to individual list and originating request. Move by. Counsel Valens, if I, Counsel Wheeler, questions? All in. Counsel Wheeler?
Yeah, uh, I definitely support that. I think the fact that they're charging. Uh, to locate utilities on municipal railways. Yeah, I could definitely see other companies. Um, using that as a precedent. So I definitely support the resolution.
Okay. Anybody else? Go.
We, I mean, we don't have.
No, but we could, we could, we could potentially have. We'd be pushing for for. I don't know, how many years now? Seven? Eight? Fifteen? Yeah. So so one day we might have that utility, but it's good to have.
And the precedent too.
Yeah. Like there's all kinds of things.
Yeah, there already is. Like one call is still doing more cases. There's not than uh.
Yeah, so it's still a one-call system. Um, and just, you know, for for councils' information, we're a third-party contractor. So as an example, uh, if T. Batel wants to put five underground through the one-call system, um, you know, we we do water sewer locations. So this does affect us, you know, could affect us negatively, also positive, because there's a cost to that.
Yeah.
That we don't get reimbursed for. So this for council to consider.
So does administration have a recommendation on this particular resolution?
Uh, I guess our, you know, I'm not sure if we have a recommendation. All I would say is the one the one uh, the one-call system as currently defined works well.
Works, yeah.
Um, all developers, um, you know, know that. Um, and, you know, I guess the the simplest answer would be, you know, call before you dig, right? It makes things so much easier when you do that. Um, so I don't think there's any need at this point to change any of the systems that are currently in place.
Good. Thank you.
So everybody's good?
Yeah.
That being said, I'll call a question on favor of this motion as it reads. We'll table that by the looks of it. Okay. Up next, we have a council hereby supports resolution received from Regional Warlu pertaining to the privacy under can candidate donors. And further, the copy is most be forwarded to individual list and originating request. Move by. Counsel Lake, second by Counsel Valens, questions, comments on this? Counsel Lake?
Yeah, just to sort of understand is so saying, you know, you run for council and you have to obviously put your name down if you run. But if this is anybody that donates money to your campaign over a hundred dollars, their name needs to be published. And is that they?
So, yeah, so so right now, the way the system works is the name and their personal information is published. So as an example, um, you know, if I was to donate a hundred dollars to Joe's campaign, my name and my address shows up. So what they're saying is there's still the need for the transparency of the name of the individual and the amount they donated. But their personal information, like their address, should be protected for obviously safety reasons in some cases.
Makes sense.
So I administratively, um, we we support it because the individual would still, the donor would still have to disclose their personal information to the clerk. But it would be covered be covered under the municipal freedom of information act, so that would not be exposed. Only their name and the amount they donated would be. So administratively, we we support this.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. Okay, all good?
Yeah.
With that being said, a call question on favor? Very. Thank you. Uh, up next, we have Counsel Crabbles going to give us an update on the business award from the Chamber.
Yeah, okay. So just wanted to encourage everyone to save the date. The sixth annual Marathon District Chamber Conference Business Awards is happening this June third, twenty twenty-three at the Royal Canadian Legion. This year's event is proudly presented by T. Batel and uh supported by NFMC, Barrett Gold, Erickson's, with partner uh partnering sponsors being La Farge, Scotiabank, Crossover, Spadoni Motors. The Good Tooth Co., Confederation College, and Northwest Employment Works. So we had an outstanding amount of submissions this year for nominations. Submissions have gone back to the nominees to put in um their two cents. That's all been collected. Winners have been chosen. Awards are about to be ordered. And uh, yeah, I just wanted to let everyone know tickets are going to go on sale, I believe, uh, Wednesday of this week. Tickets are available at Northwest Employment Works or by contacting myself or President Chamber or. President of the Chamber, uh, Dana Babrowski-Lowndes. So uh, my phone number is eight oh seven two two eight three six two two or just stop by new and uh, we hope to see everyone there. Tickets have sold. Uh, sponsors already drastically well, so we're thinking this will easily be a sold-out event.
Thank you for that. I certainly would love to be there, but I will be in Niagara Falls at the Ontario Association Police Service Board AGM. So I won't be attending, but congratulations and uh I don't get that back up and running and uh, you know, hopefully it'll be, well, sounds like it'll be a huge success. So.
Yeah.
I encourage council to attend a really good event and uh, uh, thanks.
So your worship, the the motion isn't there. Um, but if a council member, we should list names, um, so they're covered under municipal expense files. See if they will be attending.
We'll have another meeting. We'll have another meeting before the event, but.
We should, I hope you go. Although as a leaf fan, I'm not going to contact anybody named Babrowski.
Babrowski-Lowndes. Anyone named. No, Northwest Employment Works. If anyone's looking for tickets, just stop by new and uh, yeah, they go on sale Wednesday.
Okay, so we will have a motion right written up in regards to this and then we'll all sign it up uh tomorrow. But so if you're interested, Counsel Suki?
I'm not here.
Okay, you're going to be there on behalf of the Chamber. Counsel Lake?
I hope to be there. I believe I'm working.
Okay, I will not be there. I'll be I'll be away. So with that being said, we'll have uh Counseler Lake and potentially Counsel Wheeler, just in case. If you are, just let the board know. Thank you. Well, and I'll sign a motion up on that for tomorrow. Okay? All that being said, thank you very much. And I have a motion here to adjourn it.
Sorry, worship. There is one announcement for you to make there.
Oh, geez, yes, sir. Sorry about that. Providing information about derelict uh derelict and inoperable vehicles.
So I'm I'm happy to highlight.
Yeah, thank you. I was going to say.
So uh, one of the the spring areas that we're focusing on for bylaw enforcement. Um, that for our bylaw is uh inoperable and derelict vehicles. Uh, so those are vehicles um in your yard um that are either uh inoperable, i.e. you can't drive them. Um, or they're uninsured, uh, which means they're not drivable. Um, so we will be having information posted tomorrow uh through our social media and our website. Uh, with respect to the bylaw. Um, we will be enforcing the current bylaw. So the way the bylaw works. Um, if you do not follow the bylaw within a specified time period, I believe we've listed ten days, uh, you'll get a first notice. Um, on what you have to do to be compliant with the bylaw. Uh, if you're not compliant within that time period, uh, which is ten days after the notice. Uh, we will hire a private contractor to come remove your vehicle um and take it away. Um, and those costs will be added to the tax rule um and become taxes receivable. Uh, so we're going to provide ample public education uh to the community. Um, but this is one of the bylaws we will be enforcing um over the next four or six weeks.
Great. Uh, thanks for that. And I'm sorry I missed that because I uh, I that's really is a really uh uh. Issue with the community where you get vehicles that are left and they're going to fix or not fix, and it becomes a eyesore for the neighbor or the neighborhood. So I really appreciate that administration is going to focus on this and get this cleaned up in in due time over the next month or so or month. Because uh, you know, it is not very pretty when you see vehicles that are torn apart, uh, sitting in driveways that are not going to be operable at any time in near future. So thanks for that. That uh. Uh, again, people have to be respectful of other people's uh uh yards and uh, bless them.
And there are legitimate cases of people like working on vehicles. That's all. Okay, we're talking about. The the things that clearly are not being worked on. They're just.
That, yeah, but the the bylaw is very clear. Um, and the infographic we're going to release tomorrow has a link to the bylaw. Uh, we encourage residents uh to read it. Um, and obviously, you know, in the event that somebody is actively working on a vehicle. You know, we would have a discussion, you know, with the vehicle's owner um to ensure that that was the case. Um, but we, you know, this is this generally a yearly uh event that we undertake. Um, and we just wanted to provide ample public notice that this was going to be happening um in earnest over the next couple of days.
So with that being said, it's a good point, and I don't want to belabor this, but there are individuals who in the past have just covered their cars with tarp. It's part of the bylaw. But the tarps are just, they're they're ratty. Now they're blowing in the wind and they're they're really even worse looking than just the car sitting here. Is that going to be addressed?
So that that is actually currently, so the the way you have to tarp your vehicle already is in the bylaw. Um, I would say we we've been a bit lackadaisical in enforcing it. Uh, a blue tarp is not appropriate as per the bylaw. Uh, it's very clear what type of tarp you have to use, and we will be enforcing that uh as part of uh this enforcement.
Good. Thank you for that because, yeah, you know, and those individuals have fallen some of the guidelines that were identified, but they're the tarp within a six month, not even three months sometimes, like. Blowing in the wind and it's all tattered. So thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Comment that that just that it kind of, you know, we have so many bylaws to enforce. And like you said, it's so challenging to enforce them all. Full on all the time. So it almost seems like a reasonable approach to do like this little blitz type of thing, right? For some of the bigger items that are always going to be approached. Pick your line, do a little four to four to six week blitz for, so those bigger tick items seems like a decent approach.
Yeah, absolutely. Perfect. And uh, you know, we all want to live in our community, make sure it's a clean place. And that's one step forward. So thanks for that.
I have one more thing. Just talk about cleanup. I don't think it was mentioned, but it's really cleanup day.
Oh, yes. Thank, thank. So if not on there, we should have put it on there. Pitch in date um is on, is this Saturday. Um, and maybe I'll just see Mr. Parrish come down. I think we're locating the bins here.
We pick up derelict vehicles and put them in these bins?
No. Yeah, we will be locating the bins here. Absolutely. So Saturday, we're scheduled to go in. And we actually have a lot of public works employees working that day to assist with the public, uh, as we have a lot of volunteers committed to that.
So with that being said, Mr. Parrish, like in regards to the garbage bag pickup, we typically have garbage bags out, or will that be located?
So if you, a resident takes or what we have, the public is collecting um garbage around the community. They will just pick the bags up. Uh, we're hosting that at the arena this year. So the arena will be the central location for pickup. I believe there's a barbecue set up there for the end of the day. And at that point, residents pick up the garbage. We will have staff going around picking around the curbside and certain areas and collecting all that at the same time. But we're doing also weighing in all the garbage this year. We want to see the. But we're doing also weighing in all the uh garbage this year. We want to see the tabulation of how much we've collected as a group and attended community.
I just, uh, so I know councillor Zolak was talking about the garbage between uh, the hospital and the high school, which is a path used personally. So no school on Saturday, but if we pick up garbage on Friday, would it be possible to, would the bins be here?
Absolutely. Or if you let us know, if the school lets us know, we can actually make arrangements to pick it up on site.
And we'll go through it, councillor Zolak.
Absolutely. Yeah, that is a hospitable.
It's pretty bad, that.
I mentioned it like a few days ago. I went on that trail for the first time in maybe a year and I, it was awful.
Yeah, and all the snow was melting down too. So good. Uh, yeah, I spoke with the with the Tassuki and asked about that because Earth Day is a little early for us. So conjunction with our pitching day and Earth Day, we're all doing the same thing. It's it's really our Marathon's Earth Day in a sense. But we're our, our schedule doesn't match with Earth Day for the cleanup because we still have a lot of snow on the ground or in the bush. So it it's thanks for that and when thanks to administration. So we encourage everybody to get out and tell all your neighbors and friends. As as again, it really does work well in our community to clean up to the event. Good, thank you. Appreciate it. And now that would be said, I'll adjourn the meeting at uh five fifty, five fourteen P M. Thank you very much, councillor Lake and councillor Wheeler.
Started.
Yeah.
Eleven and four is the event, Saturday.
Liz and I are.
Oh, yeah, true. Yes, we're saying, absolutely. When you got cigarettes, we need.
Yeah.